It's time to get the show started. If you would please silence your cell phones. Mr. User? There's an ongoing joke, we'll explain later, see me after the meeting and all these. We do have copies of our agenda up on the table readily available. And we also have some Germix up on the table if you'd like to wash your hands as well. This evening, I'm not joking, we have approximately half of our staff in this office is out today. So, and I know in various places throughout the county, we've got a lot of staff out. So, this evening's meeting, some obviously are going to be filling in, chiming in, and the best we can, because the staff that were supposed to be doing the presenting, unfortunately, aren't able to be here, and I don't want what they have either. So, and I think everybody feels the same way.
If anybody starts coughing, you'll be escorted out.
Yeah. But anyway, okay. Let's get moving. Hereby called this meeting of order, today is Monday, July the 29th. I've got 4:31, it's a work session and called meeting. Normally, the last Monday of the month, we have a work session. And the voting meeting is the first Monday of the month, but because of some items that needed to be handled this evening, we went ahead and done a combined meeting. And the board will decide at the end of the meeting how we're doing, if there's any items that we need to reconvene for next Monday. So just keep your ears open, and a little bit if we're able to make that decision. Moving on to our agenda. Number two, consider adopting the minutes of the January 2nd, 2018 called meeting. Gentlemen, I hope you've had an opportunity to review those minutes. If so, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Motion.
Commissioner Bryant first.
Second.
I think I heard Commissioner Nick's second, first. Commissioner Goodger a third. Any discussion?
You vote before.
Okay. No discussion? Anyone in favor with the most, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed say no. Motion carries, minutes adopted, thank you. At this time, I'd like to call on our next door neighbor from Haversham County, Commission Chairman Victor Anderson, to discuss Haversham County's bicentennial 2018. Chairman, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to come across the river and bring you greetings from Haversham County across the Chattahoochee. I'm going to get out of here quick, because I don't think we're quite as sick as y'all are over there. I get an opportunity today to do something that, you know, as Commissions, it's not uncommon for us to start off our meetings with proclamations and that sort of thing. And I know you guys are used to doing that in your meetings, today being a work session, but in normal meetings. Today, I get to bring you a proclamation. Haversham County was founded by the state legislature in 1818. And once I read this proclamation, you should understand a little bit about why I'm here, and why I'm wanting to bring you greetings and well wishes and an invitation from Haversham County to participate throughout the year with us in celebrating 200 years of existence in Haversham County. With that, I'll read this proclamation. Whereas Haversham County was founded on December 15th, 1818, with an initial area of approximately 713 square miles, and whereas, on this special occasion of our 200th anniversary, we plan to celebrate this notable time in our history by honoring our past, planning for our future, and celebrating 200 years of community. And whereas parts of Haversham County were later split off to become part of the counties of Raven in 1828, Lumpkin in 1832, Banks in 1859, Wac in 1858, and Stevens in 1905, leaving the present size of Haversham County at approximately 279 square miles. And whereas, we wish to take this opportunity to recognize those who have historically played a role in forming our community and our neighboring communities, and whereas, aside from once sharing land, our counties have a shared history. And now therefore be it proclaimed by the Haversham County Board of Commissioners, we hereby honor neighboring counties as Haversham Canyons in 2018 in celebration of Haversham County's bicentennial year. We call upon all to join us in acknowledging and celebrating this momentous occasion. So, I'd like to present this to...
Absolutely. Say what? Do the picture. Give her that.
Okay.
And I'll tell you a story in just a few minutes. Come on, guys.
Yeah, pretty good.
Thank you, and we appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I've still got cousins across the river, and they claim us and wish to claim them to some extent. Our records show 1857.
Okay, well...
Ms. Judy, our historian? When I heard that, I looked and she looked at me.
And I was looking at that, and I was noticing the seal you had up here, so, you know, we'll talk to the clerk.
No, we're good, thank you.
I do have copies, we have a brochure with events going on throughout the year, that I'll leave several copies, as well as, just in case anyone is interested, just a printed out copy of the program.
Thanks, man, appreciate it. And I know you've got to get to your granddaddy duties.
I do, I do.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And as you say, my family is originally from White County. My father's family is in the Shoal Creek area, most of them are still there. My mother's family grew up on the north side of Cleveland, so this is home for me, and appreciate the work you guys did.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, man. Okay, bear with me, I'm kind of out of sorts here, so. All right, all right, so moving on to item four. Conduct public hearing for updating the official land use map of White County in order to modify the official map to reflect all land use actions taken by the White County Board of Commissioners since December of 2015. Gentlemen, it might understand that periodically, staff would bring us a copy of the updated map, so that when we're, folks are looking on our website, looking at the land use map, that they have a current version with items that have been approved by this board. So, John, you got the stuff? You got...
Okay.
John, you have the floor.
Thank you. In your packets, you have a list of all the land use changes, only changes that this board has made since December of 2015. On the table over here, we've circled the different ones, so if you've got one in yours that says number one, it coincides with number one on the circle on the big map on the table, if you have a question on any one of them. Like I said, all of these have been approved, all we got is taking all the ones that you guys did, put them on this map, make this map effective the last day of 2017, and that way we'll have that map going forward as an official map for the county. Periodically, we'll update that as we go along, but once you make the decision, that change becomes a part of the map, but we just make this map official by putting them all in one, double and triple check, and I'm going to make sure they're correct.
All right. Gentlemen, any questions for Mrs. Sale? Because under land use guidelines, I do have to conduct even maybe brief in nature, and it's kind of a formality, just something we have to do. Correct, Miss Shannon?
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Sale? And again, focus on all this, these are items that have already been approved, we are not approving anything outside of the map itself, and the changes that have been done since December of 2015, through December 2018.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, seventeen.
Correct.
I'll get my dates together here. All right, all right. At this time, as we, I sound like I broke the record, we spoke over there, is there a better way to conduct public hearings, but unfortunately, we have to conduct these in a similar manner every time we conduct one, so their T's are crossed, N's are dotted. So what I'll do, though, from the floor up, for those who, anyone who'd make any comments in support of the changes that have already been approved by the board on the map, and then I'll give three calls, close that, then we'll go and give an opportunity to anyone who has any concerns regarding these items that have already been approved over the last couple of years, I'll give you ample time as well to issue any concerns you were to have there, and then we'll close that discussion. So officially, hereby make the first official call, anyone, and you don't have to, anyone who'd like to make a comment regarding the adoption of the map. Again, it's that awkward time again, so I'll issue a second call. Okay, and third call, going once, going twice, all right. Miss Shannon, if you'll notate the records, I offered a call, those who speak in support of the changes on the map. At this time, I'll start anyone who has concerns regarding this particular action. Okay, third call, going once, going twice, all right. Miss Shannon, if you'll make notation the record that we offered three calls, those have any concerns regarding the changes that'll be adopted on the land use map. Okay? Gentlemen, you have any other comments you'd like to make before I move on to item five, which is the actual approval of the map?
So your people say it's due, it's up to date for the map?
Does the map reflect December 31st, or will it reflect the approval as a date?
It will actually reflect December 31st as the date. We made it...
And that's because that's the map that the planning commission had their public hearing on, was prior to that last zoning change that y'all made. That's why that difference is there.
And he would have one since then, so I...
Right, but we made it effective the date that the planning commission, because you had not approved that one on January 2nd yet, so we just made the last date December.
Okay, all right. Gentlemen, item five, consider approval to update the official land use map of White County in order to modify the official map to reflect all land use actions taken by the White County Board of Commissioners since December of 2015, and will go through December 31st, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve said map?
Someone, Mr.?
Commissioner Nick's first.
Second.
Commissioner Goodger, I'll get you in on that. All right. Any other discussion? All right, have none on favor with the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed say no. Motion carries, thank you. Before we move on to item six, we will, the board will be entering the executive session at the end of this meeting to discuss real estate personnel. I always like to make a note of that at the beginning of each meeting, and I got off track there for just a moment, so it's in your minutes, in your agenda. Item six, Mr. John Sale, Director of Community and Economic Development, to present information regarding minimum square footage for residential structures.
You sign that map later, is that, or you want to do it right now?
I'll sign it after meeting.
Okay, in your packages, you asked a couple months ago for us to look at minimum square footage. I called around to the various counties that surround White County. As you noted in your package, most of them do not have a minimum square footage for a stick-built house. The one exception, which is not connected to us, is Jackson County, and they require 1,400 square feet. They have varying lot sizes, depends on the type of house, and whether you have septic or water, et cetera. But if you have septic and well, in Jackson County, you have a minimum lot size of 1.5 acres, so a lot of 1,400 square foot home.
Even with water and sewer, you still got 1.5 acres?
Well, a water and sewer, it goes down in size, and I don't, I didn't...
So the minimum is 1.5 acres, but if you don't have water and sewer?
Correct, if you have septic and a well.
I understand.
But if you look on that table that I gave you as well, most of them have the national standard for the minimum square footage on a manufactured housing, which is a single wide, which is eight by 40, or 300 square foot built. So that, in and of itself, if we're concerned about tiny houses, a tiny house is considered anything under 400 square feet, so a single wide mobile home would be considered a tiny home. And if you look in your package, there is information from DCA, Department of Community Affairs, and there's a fact sheet on tiny houses, and it shows you, if we now look through it, that you in fact have mobile homes listed as tiny houses, you have recreational vehicles, and then you have site-built homes. At this time, they consider anything under 400 square feet, and they've actually sent out an amendment to the state ordinance, if you want to amend it to allow for tiny homes. They have done the work to send out a ordinance, a sample ordinance that you could use. And what that sample ordinance basically does is reduces the minimum size of a room within the building code. The current standard size for one, at least one room in a home is 120 square feet, they're reducing that for tiny homes to 70 square feet. And the current building code is 120 square feet, and each auxiliary room is 70 square feet, with the exceptions of kitchens and bathrooms, which are not considered to be habitable spaces. So if you go through and you go by code, about the smallest home you could, stick-built home you could get, is around 330 square feet, stick-built, with the current code. If you adopted the new ordinance the state put out, it would be even easier to make that, those sizes. But I think in most cases, if you think of a living room, a couple of bedrooms, a kitchen, a couple of baths, a utility room, you're going to get up around 600 square feet, according to current building codes. So I don't know if you want to have a question and answer, or what more information you're looking for, but most of the situations that we have currently, we can address with the building code. If, for instance, somebody were to go up to Home Depot and buy a shed, and decide they're going to make that a tiny home, that shed is not built according to our ICC codes, building codes, so we wouldn't allow it, doesn't have the plumbing, doesn't have the other things that you would need. Also, with the minimum acres that we have, with one acre, that is going to be a deterrent to tiny homes, because by the time you get water, you get the septic, you get electricity, you get everything out there, plus on an acre, it's going to tell you that you're probably going to want to build a bigger than a tiny home on that property. I'll take any questions that the board has at this time.
One thing, and I had spoke to John earlier today, and I know this subject has come up on and off from the board, a time, a few times over the last year. I guess what, you know, I may be wrong, I don't think we're going to make the decision tonight, but what are we trying to accomplish? What would we be wanting to accomplish, is my question. I'm not trying to put it on the spot, I'm just trying to figure out what we're doing.
Well, we all see everything that's on the TV about the tiny houses, and how people are, I mean, me and my wife, if everything was so much smaller, I mean, you can't hardly make one big enough for us, let alone smaller. I don't understand, I guess the problem would be, what would keep somebody from coming out and saying a subdivision that didn't have, that didn't have any kind of covenants in it, or those 300, 400, 1,000 dollar homes, and back in a tiny house, and setting it up, and from the people that I've talked to, and Commissioner Hoffman and myself, we've had one meeting with some of the agriculture people, and I'm not going to tell you what all of them said, because it wasn't real nice. But I think what we're trying to define is, when do we start destroying somebody else's property values? I guess that's one of the questions. Now, if it's in like a campground setting where there's campers and stuff like that, then, you know, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Our code right now has not allowed for you to have a, on a chassis or on wheels, that would be considered a recreational vehicle, and would not be allowed in a subdivision or in an R1 residential zoning at this time. You'd have to be in RV park in order to have that type of structure. And if you're talking about a stick-built on a slab, that's a different story, you couldn't build that smaller.
Well, I don't think that's what, when we talk about tiny houses, I don't think that's what we're talking about. I think we're talking about building a one-room mobile unit to live in, and just bringing it in.
Mobile unit?
Yeah.
And they're showing harm, this would be real ugly garbage.
I mean, they have to move them, they don't always move them on wheels, I mean, some of them they move like on rollback, or a flatbed trailer, or something like that. But I just worry about this community's property values is what I worry about.
I think we've seen some of the sheds you mentioned, like Home Depot or Lowe's, that have been converted into houses, so.
They don't meet code, and we'll go out there and address those at those times, we did with co-enforcement of the building inspectors, but again, we can't stop what Home Depot or Lowe's may advertise, but the fact is that those are not built, the floor joints are not built correctly, insulation's not built correctly, in order for that to be a habitable space.
I guess the question becomes, could you take one of those and change the construction design of it to make code?
And be adapted to make code?
You'd have to do a lot of work in order to do that, and then we would have inspections, just like we would normal construction, every phase, a rough in on electrical, you'd have inspections on the plumbing, you have inspections on the HVAC, you'd have inspections on the framing, and then you go through the normal course, but they would have to come and tell us what they're going to do, and then we would go through, take a building permit, and we go through the normal building permit process with them, in order to make sure it met code.
And those codes are basic life safety, the basic life safety codes.
Those are ICC codes.
I want to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, yeah.
We're talking about bringing in, I'm using Home Depot or Lowe's, setting a building down and setting it on slab. We're not talking about bringing it in on wheels, we're talking about, because I think we got two, and I think this is why we're having a quasi-work session, so we can figure this thing out.
Right, if you bring it in on wheels, it's got to meet the 1974 manufactured home standards, that are federal standards for manufactured mobile homes. Or it can be a recreational vehicle, which has its own set of standards, there are park models that are about 400 square feet that we allow in the RV parks, but we do not allow those in R1 residential zoning at this time.
So then what you're telling the board is, you think we're comfortable the way things are right now for the time being? And that may be the reason that we don't see anything in any of the other counties.
I think if, you know, unless you just want to say that we need to have certain-sized houses, like Dawson County, around the lake, they have a special overlay district for their vacation rental restrictions, and I believe they have 1,200 square feet on that for that purpose, to protect the size of houses on the lake. If that's what you want, but what you're going to do is that you're going to further restrict what people can do with their land. And in some cases, if you made an eight, if say, depending on how big you make it, you may make a situation where you're requiring a stick-built house to be X amount of size, and they say, well, that costs me more, I'll just go get a mobile home that's 320 square feet, and I'll put it, I can put it on the same piece of property, what would we rather have? A stick-built house of 400 square feet, or a mobile home with 320?
Well, and a lot of subdivisions already have minimum square foot requirements in their subdivisions to cover those covenants.
Right. And those are covenants that take an import.
So are we having any inquiries or calls about tiny houses?
We've had a couple, and we've had a couple of instances where people said, you know, can we have a shed? And we'd say, you can have a shed for a shed purpose, you can't have it to live in.
Well, I only know for right now, off my head, I only know for maybe two or three that, and they are in permanent campground settings, and that's behind them, I mean, they got water and food, and it's sort of like a camper or so.
Right, and in most of the situations, those are grandfathered in, because those RV parks were there prior to zoning going into place in April 2015. We haven't permitted any new RV parks, because part of the zoning said you have to have half-acre lots in order to do that going forward.
Well, I mean, that was the part that we had, kind of, was, it kind of cleared up.
This information, and thank you for the way you put this together, and like I said, putting up my questions today, where were we wanting to go with this, if anywhere?
Right. I mean, we're here to enforce whatever you decide you want us to do. If you decide that you want us to come back with a number, and look at where we put it in the code, and do that work, we're happy to do that, but I think a lot of the questions can be handled by the current process of the building code and inspections and permitting.
Well, I think we all agree that there's enough government regulations in this world that it's, and I probably don't want to be a part of making it no harder than we are.
I like just tating this and leaving it alone, I guess.
All right, um...
Thanks, John. Thanks, gentlemen.
All right, Ms. Shannon, do you need a special motion to take no action or are you cool with just leaving it alone?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
Can move it on.
All right, folks, we're going to leave it alone. And like I said, if this is, this is, this is a, it's a work session and call meeting, if this is just a work session, we've been having this discussion like we just had with no action being taken. So I'm just letting you give you some insight.
One of the points that was made tonight was the fact that Home Depot and Lowe's, they do sell these buildings and they sell them with the pretense that you can live in them, but they don't make code. But I mean, they do not make code, so.
Well, and one thing, I know our staff and I believe, Mr. Nix, you've had conversations with the power company. When power's being hooked up to any of these previous situations that we're aware of, that our company's not supposed to be hooking power to these
That's right.
Before the county has issued any type of.
And we did, we did see some places where that could have possibly happened when it wasn't supposed to. The power company was selling power and not selling regulations.
I think we're in good shape with both the power companies now that we.
Yeah, yeah, and I talked to them and they all seem to be okay with what's going on now.
I think one of the problems that they might have and kind of like everyone was talking about, if, if Lowe's and Home Depot advertise, he says you can live in them and all, and somebody goes and buys one, brings it on to their property before they ever get a permit or anything, then we just need to go out and tell them you got a nice shed.
Yeah.
You know, storage shed, you know, because that's all it can be.
Well, the thing about the power company is if you are a, if either one of us or anybody, Alex is a member of the Hydroshem Electric and you already have a meter somewhere, it's not hard to buy another meter to put on your property somewhere. I mean, if you're going to do a utility building or something, they're usually receptive to.
I think, well, we have to look at those people that think, well, you know, we have those that, that try to.
I'm sorry.
All right, moving on to item seven, and I'll keep this in short, sweet and simple. Consider appointment to the Joint Development Authority of Dawson, Love County, the White Counties will be removing the previous development member, member that was Tom O'Brien, who is no longer with the county and his, in his place will be appointing John Seller, new economic, I'm going to stop using the word new here in a little bit, but economic development director. Do I have motion to appoint John to that position?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hoffman first, Commissioner Bryant second. Any discussion? Have none on favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, folks say no, motion carries. Thank you. All right, item eight, consider appointment to the White County Department Family and Children's Services Board. At eight, it's kind of the board's attention that Mr. Tom Carter, who was serving the county on that particular board, submitted a, his resignation and has moved from the area. And DFAX has presented to us Ms. Cheyenne Thornton as a replacement, who's a White County resident. Ms. Shannon, do you have any other comments regarding this? I do not believe I know Ms. Thornton, but her resume is.
Yeah, she works, she works very closely with DFAX in her, her current role as the Executive Director of the South Inota Child Advocacy Center that covers White County. So they were hoping to be able to get her expertise on that board and felt like she would be a good member to have.
Ms. Jim, if I'm not out of line, she is fine, you're on with the ladies. She's got her heart with her children.
She does, she works very hard.
Do I have motion to appoint Ms. Thornton?
Salute.
Commissioner Nix first? Commissioner Bryant?
I got you. Yeah, yeah, you got it.
Close discussion, have none on favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, folks say no, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item nine, consider surplus with 2003 Dodge Caravan currently assigned to the White County Senior Center. Ms. Barbara, I understand it's, it's on its last legs or it's on no legs at all.
It has served us well, but not anymore.
It's dead? I'll have to say it.
It's, it's, it's not able to pass inspection, it's just not, we're not able to use it.
All right. How are, how are you guys doing the prior as promotion, how are you guys doing on transportation?
We have, we have the other two vehicles and we have another van that the seniors purchased with their funds that we are getting prepared to get on the way.
All right, so everything's okay?
It's working.
All right. Do I have a motion surplus to 2003 Dodge Caravan? Commissioner Bryant first, Commissioner Hoffman, was that a second?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Have none on favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, folks say no, motion carries, thank you. Item ten, consider renewal of the annual joint use agreement with the White County Board of Education for recreational facilities. Ms. Shannon, you want to give a brief narrative, it's pretty short, this is a annual thing or a semi, every other year we do?
Yes, with the Board of Education, they allow us to use their facilities for recreational activities such as the football field, the gyms at several other schools. They do use some of our facilities, but with the way that the agreement has been established for several years, we provide the Board of Education with $25,000 a year in order to compensate them for the, the usage of those facilities that they allow us to use.
And this is just essentially this continuation of what we've had?
It is, there's no change to the agreement, it is the same agreement that we had last year.
And they, I'll just be blunt, they do us right, they provide staff, they help open up stuff and they keep someone around Joe, I know in the rate department, you take your staff to those locations when you do?
Yes, sir, we have, we have staff members in our place or sometimes too, if we have games and anybody as well clean up when we're done, we do. Fit everything back, sometimes clean it up as it was, they'd say that, but we're like Boy Scouts, we'll leave it better than we can.
Well, thank you, we always want to take the high road, so I appreciate it. All right, gentlemen, do I have a motion to renew the annual joint use contract with the Board of Education?
I make a motion.
Commissioner Goode first?
I'll see.
Commissioner Hoffman second, discussion? All right, have none on favor, most signify by saying aye. Aye, folks say no, motion carries. Joe, we'll say this, since the county took the recreation program back over directly, I don't want to jinx it tonight, but I have not received the first complaint from the school regarding the joint use. Whereas in a previous lifetime, shall we say, that it was somewhat ongoing. So I appreciate you and your staff doing a good job. Like you said, being like Boy Scouts and we'll take the high road, so thank you very much.
I have had many complaints, period. Something going good, Joe, keep it up.
You should bring something brewing, huh?
Something brewing, huh?
Item twelve, consider resolution revising banking institution signatures, Ms. Shannon?
We skipped a lot of them.
Yeah.
Well, we can do twelve.
Oh, doggone, I sure did, I'm sorry. I got my glasses on too. I, I'm, this whole flu vote got me kind of squirrely, I'm kind of running out of here. Now, I'll be Adam. Item eleven, consider approval of a resolution for fiscal year 2018 budget amendments. Ms. Shannon?
Okay, the amendments that are before you are kind of going back and taking care of stuff that's already happened for documentation purposes. There's one amendment that is revising the health insurance amount to all of the.
Departments.
Did y'all hear that?
Yeah, somebody called.
Oh, okay. I didn't know what that was.
Our cameraman had to step out.
Oh.
We appreciate you stepping out.
You're okay, bless you.
Put that light on while I'm on.
There's a $193,099 that was included in the general fund budget that was adopted last year, but that has now been dispersed on the department line items. So that is basically what's before you is moving those funds around to the department that, that it is assigned to. And then there is a budget amendment for $125,018.13, which is related to the two and a half percent pay increase that was approved for December 1st forward in this fiscal year. And that again is allocating those funds from contingency out to each department's salaries and wages line item.
Any questions, gentlemen, for last or motion?
Basically, this, this is not, this is not adding anything to the budget. It's just.
It's funny, it's already in the budget. It's, it's pushing it down to this respective departments. Simple way of saying it, Ms. Shannon?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve the changes.
Commissioner Nix?
I'll say it.
Commissioner Goode your second, any other discussion? Have none on favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, folks say no, motion carries. Now, item twelve, consider revising the banking signature cards.
On this, we're just taking Ms. Vicky Mason's name off of the signature cards and replacing that with Jody Liggins. We have a, one resolution that is for non-CD accounts and one that is for CD-related accounts. Those are the two resolutions.
Just a point for the public, we as the county, we require two signatures on these accounts so that we do have a system of checks and balances. All right.
We blame this on Vicky for returning.
Yeah.
Will you take her back, please? Oh, gee, honey, do this, it's going to grow. All right, do I have a motion to approve the updating the banking signature cards? Commissioner Bryant first. Commissioner Goode your second, any other discussion? Have none on favor, signify by saying aye. Folks say no, motion carries, thank you. Item thirteen, consider adopting a corrected resolution stating the qualifying fees for the county offices to be filled in the upcoming 2018 primary and/or election. Ms. Shannon?
Yes, your clerk, who would be me, made a mistake on the resolution that was adopted previously on January 2nd on the qualifying fees for the District Two and District Three Board of Commissioner seats. I had included in that resolution that the qualifying fee would be $497.64 and the corrected amount should be $360. So I'm just asking that you adopt this corrected resolution and fix my mistake.
I mean, we adopt. We're going to board again next month?
I don't think any other changes.
Hi, Commissioner Goode, motion to adopt the, to adopt the corrected resolutions, do I have a second?
Second, I made a mistake.
Now, come on, man, it went down, I mean, you could have seconded that one. All right, any other discussion?
My question, did it, nothing changed on the Board of Education, right?
No, there is a paragraph B in the, in the state code that talks about the county commission seats that, that I had not read and then I happened to see it and I thought, oh, I should have read that beforehand. But that does not affect the Board of Education seats.
All right, got a first and second, all in favor, most signify by saying aye. Aye, folks say no, motion carries, thank you. All right, item fourteen, consider approval of correspondence to the city of Cleveland regarding water service. And Mr. Melton, and again, at the beginning of the meeting, I said we had folks out, so we're trying to fill in the best we can. In November 2016, the county was invited by the chamber to attend a meeting at Frudenberg involving the city of Cleveland for the purpose of increasing the water volume to the plant. Since, since then, there's been various meetings during 2017 and the county would very much like to be a part of finding a solution to getting the plant's needs met sooner rather than later. So, Mr. Melton, the staff has prepared a letter stating the county's desires to help be a partner in that solution and work closely with our largest private employer. And this letter is a commitment to that effect to the city of Cleveland to be taken care of in this calendar year 2018. And for those who don't know, you know, even though the Frudenberg, you heard me, you hear me refer it to Frudenberg, they desire to be referenced now as Frudenberg because that is the, their German arm of their company is now, is what is the controlling arm for this plant. So we're trying to break ourselves, we refer to it as in okay, which is very hard when it's been here since about 1989 or so. So it's like, it's challenging. Anyway, the plant sits in the unincorporated area of White County. But it is served currently by the city of Cleveland, it is included in their service, they service the water. So the city of Cleveland is the water utility provider to Frudenberg. And sewer, thank you. So the county, you know, we recognize the, that Frudenberg is the largest private employer and we want to reach out to the city of Cleveland to be a partner in meeting those needs that the plant had, the plant, if they're wanting more water, I'm hoping that's leading to some good information at a later date, I'm hoping. So, yeah, I know they're working on some fire suppression, some other needs. We just want the city of Cleveland to know, we want to be a partner with them and continue to solidify what's almost been a 30-year relationship. We want to continue that for another generation. So, gentleman, Mr. Melton has asked that for a motion to approve the letter to the city of Cleveland saying our commitment to be a partner in this solution.
And have any, any changes they want, Richard?
Not that I'm.
One good thing about Frudenberg that we did find out, out of their fleet of businesses, this is, this is considered one of their best ones. And so that's good to know. Means they got good employees. Good employees make companies look good, make us look good, we can provide good debt. Maybe somebody else will come in and hire another six hundred or something like that.
That'd be a blessing.
We might have to import employees.
I make a motion if we send this letter to the Cleveland City Council.
Okay, have a motion, Commissioner Goode?
Sir.
Commissioner Hoffman second, any other discussion? I'm making my notes fairly. Close discussion, all right. All in favor of Mr. Melton sending the letter over and he will be the contact officially, which I know we as elected officials, we will be participating, I know that. We have to have a central person who's here eight hours a day. Because we are supposed to be in town. Close discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, folks say no, motion carries, thank you. All right, item fifteen, Ms. Jody is unable to be with, be with us because she's sick. So, Ms. Shannon, if you don't.
We don't know that.
Will you go through the financial?
This, this monitor over here seems to have a little bit of a glitch, so this one looks like it's pretty much steady, but I've noticed that one flickering on and off several times, so.
As long as it shows us more money, we're good.
Bear with me, we'll see what it shows. You can see here that for the month of December, revenues were at $850,675. Expenditures were at $1,402,306. Year to date, that brings us to revenues at $12,162,332 and expenditures at $8,159,850.
Okay, thank you.
Part of our general fund revenue are alcohol taxes and fees. For FY18, you can see we've budgeted $114,800. We've received 68% of that revenue to date through the end of December. For a total of $77,696. And I will mention that, that that, a lot of that has to do with renewals are due by the end of December. So all the alcohol licensed businesses have renewed their license for 2018. And this slide gives you the status of the TAVIT tax, the Title Abilorm Tax. For the month of December, revenues for the TAVIT tax were at $73,300. And we've received 54% of the revenue budgeted for FY18 on the TAVIT revenues. And local option sales tax receipts for December were $208,590. We've received 59% of the revenue that we've budgeted for FY18 from lost for a total that we've received this fiscal year of $1,355,996. Okay, hotel motel tax, this is a separate fund that, that we maintain. For December, revenues received in hotel motel tax were $72,025. And to date, we have received 75% of the revenue that we've budgeted for FY18 at $522,37. Okay, splosh receipts for the 37th month of the 72-months splosh are at $347,649. And you can see how that receipt is divvied out, the county keeps the 1% admin fee. Helen and Cleveland received equal portions of $44,742. The county maintained $254,688. Of that, $100,000 was earmarked for the existing debt service and $154,688 was moved into the project account. This is an ongoing record of the splosh receipts. Again, you can see that the December receipts were at $347,649. And to date, with the 2014 splosh, we have collected 11. And to date, with the 2014 SPOS, we have collected $11,987,206. This slide breaks down the separate funds, being Solid Waste, 911, the Drug Task Force, and the Noted Judicial Circuit. You can see that the only two that are cost of general fund are E911 and the Noted Circuit. You see their cost there. Year-to-date revenues, year-to-date expenditures for Solid Waste are at 39%, E911 are at 49%, Drug Task Force is at 37%, and the Noted Judicial Circuit's at 39%.
Shannon, you did good filling the finance.
I've sat in, listened to him do it for about 15 years, so I hope I didn't do you too much disservice.
You may not know the answer to this. I know Mr. Melton's not able to deal with this. Do you know the status, how things are coming along on the SPOS documentation for the ballot? I'm not trying to pitch on the SPOS, I know he was going to report on it this evening.
Yes, I know that he was putting together a timeline. I know that he's asked the department heads to have their SPOS requests for the upcoming SPOS to him by Wednesday. And he's asked that those be emailed to him if he has not already received them, since he may not be here on Wednesday. So I know he is in the process of collecting that information from the department and he is developing a timeline for the Board of Commissioners.
I'm sorry. Any bottled water?
Get a little drainage.
Okay, our manager's not here to make any comments. Gentlemen, do you have anything before I ask for a motion to go into executive session? Ms. Shannon, looking ahead to a week from today, are you aware of any matters that need to be resolved a week from today or how are we doing? If we were to a call meeting sometime in the middle of February? Is there anything of necessity that needs to be taken care of Monday night?
Not that I'm aware of. Everything that was in my folder to be taken care of was addressed tonight.
Okay. I'm on a chair's discretion. It sounds like there, and don't take this the wrong way, I don't think there may be a need to have a meeting next Monday. There's no need for us having staff come out if that's not necessary. But I'm going to open the floor for just a minute. Does anyone have any comments for the good or perhaps any questions that we may not have the answers tonight, we can start working on for you? Any upcoming announcements? Ms. Judy, do you have anything? I'm just asking.
Not really, not right now. Our next meeting will be next Thursday evening and we'll have the Bean Creek Church choir singing, so come out and enjoy this. And the City of Cleveland merchants, I don't know, Beth might want to speak to that a little bit, but they're thinking about opening their stores a little bit later on the evenings that we have meetings of the Historical Society, so it'll be interesting.
Maybe restaurants or gift shops?
And to get shops. And they're hoping to host some of the activities of their meeting.
If you don't mind me asking, you guys may not know the answer, but I'll ask. Anyone who knows, I know there's a new restaurant that's under construction on the square. Is there any timeframe on when it's going to get opened up or do we know? I'm just asking. I'm not saying anything, I'm just wondering. I'm excited about it, so...
Oh, yes, we're very excited. So that's Ward Gann's property. It's called Clyde's of Cleveland.
What'd you say, Dog? Clyde's Dog.
Yeah, Clyde's Dog. So we're very excited for that to come on board. I think that will be a pivotal point for downtown and sort of turn the tide on some things. So we're very excited about the energy that's downtown in Cleveland. I think they'll see some good things coming, but it'll be in the spring.
Okay. Yes, sure.
I got one thing. I talked to Mr. Melton this afternoon about it. I overlooked it. I applied for a grant, or David helped me apply for a grant for some ballistic equipment we needed for the SWAT team, and we got the grant, about $22,000. But I failed to follow the procedure on it. But anyway, I'm here to say that this reimbursement grant, so I need to start making arrangements on that and I just need some guidance, if you guys will loan me the money till I get the money in. But I hate to lose $22,000.
When do you expect the funds?
Well, the funds are available now, is my understanding. We haven't done anything yet and, you know, I've got...
So you have to spend it before you can get it.
Right, right. I got to spend the money before I get the grant. I'm going to get the money.
Now, you don't know how to spend money.
Trust me, give it to me.
We know. I'll be very strategic.
Hey, you're about as safe as any county in the state.
Ms. Shannon, in a situation like that, documentation, could we go ahead and authorize the chair to go ahead and sign the necessary documentation to move it forward? Have everyone done that?
We have not, no. We have not had anything on that grant on our agendas.
Well, you have, no, because I overlooked it. Got in big hurry to get it submitted and did, and I just failed to do it.
Okay. Thoughts? I'm just trying to see if we could possibly, in a...
We can certainly go ahead and, like Sheriff says, it's 100% funding, Homeland Security funding, so it's going to be 100% reimbursable. All we got to do is create a financial debit and revenue account in the grant fund and it's going to be Dr. Pass through, so...
Does the board need to approve accepting that grant? I would presume we would.
Yes.
What's the name of the grant?
Law enforcement...
Homeland Security Program, 2017.
It probably, a few dollars might have come from there.
$22,000 even?
I think it's 22...
I'd say 20, it's not over $23,000.
Yeah, it's 22, might, in some change. And like I say, I talked to Mr. Melton this afternoon, I didn't realize he was sick, but you opened it up for comment, so that's your fault.
I couldn't skip this, I'm going. Attitude like that. I'll keep it simple, guys.
But remember, they're recording that $22,000 that I got for nothing.
Alright.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to accept the Homeland Security Program for 2017, not to see $23,000, which is a 100% fully funded grant we're receiving? Do I have a motion to...
Will that cover it?
Yeah, that's all we got.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Goode, your first. Commissioner Bryant, second. Before I move forward too fast here, will this suffice allow the sheriff to move forward? Dave?
Yes.
Alright. Closed discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, folks say no. Motion carries. Now, I expect the police escort, sheriff's escort going home this evening.
Yes.
For those in YouTube land, that was a joke, please. Is there anything else? Not, and I want an executive session just second, you know, and I don't want to, you know, I say, don't step on a, step on a snake's neck and make it mad, but, you know, one thing we've heard enough media reports, our next-door neighbor, South Office, Hall County, and I'm getting a lot of comments from the community about the pay program. Gentlemen, I would encourage us to, we want to do our best to not only attract, but recruit and retain employees. And I'm not trying to put any, I'm not trying to make this awkward, we're talking business. I think it would behoove us this year to look at some potential ideas, thoughts, to find ways to work with our employees to make that happen. It's not a broken record and I'm not trying to just speak to the sheriff and I'll jump ahead off here, but I'm talking about from 911, Fire Department, other emergency services, Road Department. We've got a lot of good employees and, you know, from the Sheriff's Department, from their pay raise a year ago to our county-wide pay raise in December, I think we as a board are trying to be relevant, but with unemployment as low as it is, employers are hunting good employees. So there's the retaining part of it. We just need to be wise going into our budget season on finding ways to retain those employees. And I'll be out of my soapbox. So, do I have a motion to enter executive session?
Will I move?
Mr. Hoffman, first.
Second.
Commissioner Goode, your second. Any other discussion? Have done on favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, folks say no. Motion carries. Folks, you have a good evening again. Please make notes, we will not be having a meeting a week from tonight. And you all, you all go home, take your vitamins C, wash your hands in the hot, soak your water.